I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting from Monday, July 21, 2025, to order at this time, and we'll ask the county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSalms, to provide and lead us in the invocation.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, during these months of summer, guide our steps and strengthen our hearts. May our community be a place of joy, peace, and safety. Let all the joys of summer remind us of your goodness. Bless our citizens, first responders, and those defending our nation. May all we do this evening bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faith, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We recognize the elected officials that have joined us tonight, Town Council from Holly Ridge, Mr. Waters Abiki, Mayor Pete Partien from Holly Ridge as well, and our Sheriff, Sheriff Chris Thomas, and I think that's got everybody here with us tonight. We appreciate y'all being here, as always. We ask that everyone in attendance to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate, and we'll move on to item number one for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd like to amend the agenda to add, make them, to add the voting for representative to the North Carolina Coastal Counties Fisheries Coalition. So do we need to...
Second.
Okay, so we got, so we got a motion, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. The agenda has been amended. Now we need a motion to adopt...
Move. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We have an adoption of our agenda. Now we'll move to the approval of the items on the consent agenda. If we have anyone that has any concerns about any of those, we can have those removed and added to the agenda. If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll just make the general comment concerning the consent agenda. I did receive a phone call and have had a couple mentions to me over the, my term about the amount of that is being put on the consent agenda and some of the stuff that, that the citizens suggested that the public would really like to hear more about. And certainly, for example, we're doing the fireworks for Holly Ridge, which I, again, I think is an outstanding thing. I supported that in our workshop meeting, but it just kind of showed up there and, and so without a lot of information and why. And so the general public had the perception, at least the couple people that I talked to, that we were taking it out of our general fund, when actuality is coming out of tourism.
Right.
Which is the way it should come out. But I think these type of things, the public wants to hear, and I would like to see more come out of the consent agenda and be into our regular agenda. The flip side of that, I'm not sure we need two meetings a month to come in and spend an hour here and just go through a consent agenda. So I will, I'll offer that to the board, please.
Okay. So as we start working on the next agenda, I think we'll be more aware and cognizant of items that are on that that maybe we need to bring to the full agenda for discussion for the public to recognize here and understand what is taking place. Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
It's very obvious if anybody wants to pull anything, any commissioner can pull it and the commission, and the people can listen to it.
Okay.
So if a particular man, specific one of the commissioners wants to pull it, pull it just like you could have done while tonight, could have pulled the one on Holly Ridge and had a discussion on it. That's the easiest way to do it.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Any other discussion? Fantastic. All in favor of the motion and second on the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Items on the consent agenda have been approved. And we'll move to item three, proclamations. We have one tonight and for Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. I'm now going to read the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation for 2025. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of Onslow County and promotes health and wellness, improving the physical health, mental health, and well-being of people who live by and access parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activity by providing spaces for sports, trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programs, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas Onslow County Parks and Recreation served over 2,600 youth through athletics, provided over 11 festivals and programs to our community, and had over 1.1 million visitors at our park and beach accesses. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in Onslow County and encourages all citizens to enjoy and support the parks, trails, open spaces, and recreational opportunities that enhance our quality of life. Presented this the 21st day of July 2025.
And tonight, we have representatives from the Onslow County Parks and Recreation Department for his first venture with Onslow County here, other than the July 4 fireworks, as the new director for Onslow County Parks and Recreation, Mr. Todd Brown, as well as Laquisha Cadwalder, who has been with us for a while, and then I believe Mr. Luis Renville has been with us for about two months or so at this point, and Doug Jones was not able to be with us here. So we have our director, our athletics division, as well as our recreation division with us. And presenting that will be Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Davis?
Well, I'll say a few brief words about rec. And like, when I was growing up, being in the rec baseball league was huge, even though I was terrible and always got, I was the guy they put in right field. But, you know, just knowing that we had a place to be, coaches that took up for us and took, took us out, took care of us, and, you know, guys like you that spend the time and invest and organize and put everything together so that kids and youth can really enjoy life and be kids. And so thank you for what you guys do to make our county better and to provide rec. There is some adult recreation too, I believe that we do. So thank you for that as well. And I believe, what was it? We had the Adult Olympics here recently, senior games, and so we had some folks do very well in that. So again, thank you all for what you do. We appreciate you. Thank you, Laquisha.
Well, good evening, and thank you very much. To mention, my name is Todd Brown, and I'm very proud to say that I'm the director of Parks and Recreation in Onslow County. I'm also very lucky that I get to start my career in Onslow County at the very beginning of National Parks and Recreation Month. Because what that did was allow me to see this amazing team in action. They've been implementing a full list of diverse programs, activities, and events all month long. It's incredible to watch. It all kicked off with the 4th of July Freedom Festival at Onslow Pines Park, where over 17,000 people came to enjoy that traditional community event. I'm also very happy that we are celebrating the Parks and Recreation industry for this month, because the Parks and Recreation for decades has been trying to reemphasize, maybe redefine themselves from the old days where it was a nice thing to have, and it was a discretionary feature within the community. And now, to me, it is a must. It is a needed pillar for community success. That is very, very helpful to us, and that's what we're leaning toward, leading towards. I also want to thank the community for their participation as we, not only in the past master plans, but as we move forward. Thank you very much for all that participation. We need it. As we are excited about the future, the staff is ready to help guide us and, and be a part of the future of this great community. It's a very exciting time, and again, I'm very fortunate to be here, and we thank you all for this recognition. We thank you for the proclamation, and again, your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. As we kick off Parks and Recreation Month, and if you do go back to any of the archives of UNCW Seahawk Baseball, you may see Luis in one of those team pitchers there. So he, he played for the Seahawks not too many years ago. Thank you for being here tonight. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. So we'll move into item number four, public comment. Mr. Smitherman?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up for public comment this evening.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move right into public hearings. We have three of those scheduled this evening, and we'll go ahead and start with the first one on the Rawls New rezoning. So we'll go ahead and call Mr. Metcalf up for what he'll be a few times tonight.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Mike Chairman, and County Commissioners. This first item before you is the Rawls New Rezoning, P R E Z 2025, number eight. The applicant is Mr. Charles Rawls, and the owners are the Kenneth S. New Heirs. The overview of the request is, the requested change is from rural agriculture or RA to community business or CB. It's one tax map number in question, 1307-19, and it's located at 108 Sandridge Road in the Swansboro Township. The rezoning area is 3.57 acres, and the existing use of the property is there is an abandoned single-family dwelling on the property, and it's also partially forested. We take a look at the surfaces for the property. There is two different water lines. There's a 16, 16-inch unwasseled ductile iron pipe along Sandridge Road, as well as an 8-inch unwasseled PVC pipe, more of a typical unwasseled water main there. For wastewater serving, the area, it is by individual septic systems. There is a septic system on the property. The fire service for the area is the Hubert Fire District with an ISO rating of six. For the traffic count serving the property, we have a count from 2021. It was 4,200. We were able to also find a 2023. It was at 4,100. And again, that is our closest count, while it's on 172, and the property is on Sandridge Road. There was a count on Sandridge Road, however, it was much further away, and it was around 7,000 for 2023. Schools serving the property is Sandridge Elementary, Swansboro Middle School, and Swansboro High School. Currently at this time, the elementary and middle school are over capacity while the high school has capacity. So we take a look at the zoning for the property. You can see there that, you know, pastel green color indicates rural agriculture. See there, the intersection is the nearby commercial of highway business, and there's other various residential zonings nearby, as well as also military-owned property. So we look at the comparing the two districts. Rural agriculture's purpose is to maintain our rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county and accommodates limited low-density single-family and limited commercial uses that would serve that nearby community. Multifamily is not allowed, and you can see there, there are a few residential uses and some non-residential uses. By comparison with community business, as its purpose is to accommodate the establishment of single-scale retail, or assuming small-scale retail, and service uses that would serve that nearby community. Multifamily is allowed, up to 10 dwelling units per acre. And you can see as well, there's also a variety of non-residential uses, as it is a commercial zoning district for the county, while, again, smaller intensity and scale comparative to highway business. We'll look at the comprehensive plan. It is for agriculture and forestry. Its intent is to preserve and protect the rural character and working lands while providing limited low-density residential development and non-residential uses that would support our rural residents, as well as agriculture and forestry operations. This zoning district's intent is to preserve those working lands, and was also designed to input in areas of the county where we want to limit specifically residential growth. We take a look at the land use and development summary. So this is a commercial zoning district that's proposed. We'll look at the non-residential summary. Agriculture and forestry are the primary uses. However, uses that support those industries are permitted, along with small retail and service and civic uses that support rural residence, rural residences, and be preferably located at crossroads. Community business is a zoning district that would accommodate small-scale retail and service uses, and this property is located at a crossroads. Community business can be viewed as a corresponding zoning district and cannot be, and we'll get into that in a little bit. Future land use designings of properties, agriculture, forestry, as well as also the surrounding area, as shown on the map. Look environmental conditions for the property. There are no regulated flood zones. There are no blue line streams, and no wetlands have been submitted to any county staff at this time, but would be reviewed through the development review process. Is in the flight path overlay for our Camp Lejeune, and it's designed as to limit uses that would impact, limit, or prohibit air travel, such as tall structures, uses that would produce smoke, or lots of dust or glare. We look at reasonableness in the public interest. There are several objectives that would support rezoning the property. Objective 5.2, we want to guide the expansion and improvement in services towards specific areas of the county that also have limited infrastructure or could certainly use additional infrastructure. Community business could provide for additional services in that area. Objective 6.1 is both for the rezoning and against the rezoning. One hand, community business allows for multifamily. That's a different type of housing than is what already is there. But rural agriculture provides for manufactured housing, while community business does not. So this objective 6.1 could both support it and does not. Objective 6.2, we want to promote a broad range of commercial activities in appropriate locations, as I alluded to earlier. This is at a crossroads, which is where the comprehensive plan would want to see commercial uses there. However, community business also allows for multifamily, and a multifamily would not be in the character of this area. Non-supporting objective 2.4 deals with us making sure that our school systems have capacity for students to go there, while community business isn't allowed use. That would, you know, provide for housing for families. That would mean more students in our school system, and there are two schools within this area that are over capacity. Planning Board heard the item on June 5th, recommended unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning request. No citizens spoke against the request present, but there were two citizens that submitted emails against the rezoning request, which were provided to the Board. No military impacts were presented during the planning Board meeting. Here a contained overview of the property, its relation to various of the nearby roads, such as Sandridge and Starling Road. You can see also there the intersection of 172 and Freedom Way. Here a closer look, you can see some, again, vacant structures on the property, and also that the property is partially forested. You can see where we posted the property for this evening, and I also would like to conclude with the remarks from the Chairman of the Planning Board. So the total of 3.57 acres is at the corner of Starling Road and Sandridge Road. It's zoned RA to be zoned CB. We received two letters from the public opposing the rezoning. The owner and his representative spoke. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and a future land use map. So it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2025, number eight. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on Bath County. Concludes the staff presentation, sir.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. The first speaker is Daniel Cornwell, Cornell, excuse me, Cornell.
Good evening, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. My name is Daniel Cornell, and I live in unincorporated Hubert at 606 Calabash Drive. I'm going to talk about something a little different tonight. Let's not dance around it. Your zoning decisions have hit this community like a wrecking ball through a hornet's nest. Hubert has been treated like Onslow County's overflow lot, and we've had enough. Over 2,000 new homes have been crammed into Hubert since 2010, most of them in the last eight years, without any of the infrastructure or oversight you'd expect from responsible planning. We have no municipal government, no town hall, no local voice, just neighborhoods popping up like mushrooms after the rain, all stamped with the same R8 or R10 zoning like it's a clearance cell. And now you want to put a business on a corner that has just an insane amount of traffic, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Mr. Davis knows what I'm talking about. Right now, more than 60% of Hubert parcels fall under dense residential zoning. That's not growth, that's sprawl, the kind that clogs our roads, floods our fields, and strips the community of any character it had left. Let's talk roads. Sandridge Road now sees, on average, over 6,000 cars a day on a road that was never meant for high-volume traffic. Add in Queens Creek Road and Highway 24, and we've got a perfect storm of bottlenecks, blind turns, and busted pavement, all at this particular corner. And still, your projects keep coming. Let's talk flooding. That's our growth industry. FEMA maps show that much of our area still falls in AE and VE flood zones with little to no meaningful mitigation. Yet you approve developments in those very areas, some without stormwater plans updated in over a decade. If half of your community floods during hurricane season, you haven't mitigated a damn thing. Let's, let's be clear. Growth isn't the enemy. Unchecked, mismanaged, politically convenient growth is. We aren't against development. We're against being treated like a sacrifice zone in development that doesn't make sense. This corner doesn't make sense. The only traffic you're going to create is foot traffic. We have no sidewalks. That equals danger. We've already had numerous people killed walking down Sandridge in the past. Hubert now has over 18,000 residents, more than half of whom commute out of our area daily. They got to get back somehow. And when we speak up, we're told, well, if, if you want to say incorporate, that's on the table. We're talking about it, at least some of us. We need planning that respects the land, not just developers' timelines. We need overlays that protect wetlands, traffic studies that reflect real usage, and floodplain reviews based on 2024 data, not decade-old paperwork dusted off to check a box. This corner of the county deserves better, because if we don't draw the line now, it won't just be Hubert that suffers. The next flood, the next gridlock, the next emergency delay, it'll land right back in your lap, and no developer's handshake is worth that price. I'm not here to throw stones. I'm here to hand you a mirror. Hubert is watching. We're organized, and we're not going to keep quiet while our future is paved over one parcel at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Michael Williams.
Good evening, gentlemen. My predecessor at this speaking platform basically said it all for me. I've been down this road before with you. We, it wasn't that long ago, we went through the same opportunity, and I'm all for Onslow County, believe me. I'm tired of our kids graduating from high schools around here and college and leaving to go find good jobs. And I'm all for any efforts that you do to bring good jobs into our county that will keep our kids here for the future. But we already have jobs in Hubert. We have two convenience stores within a half, half a mile of the lot that we're talking about here, with gas stations. So that, that must employ at least 10 people, make a minimum wage. And then down the road, there's a little shopping center where there's eight stores in there built around a restaurant, and it targets convenience, not a convenience store, but anyway, maybe it escapes me, but it's a popular, low, low-cost store that sells a lot of good things. Pardon, Deb? Dollar General. There we go.
We all need a good wife.
And I'm a lucky man, believe me. And I hate being up here, because I got two family friends sitting out there, and I love them. I think they're great people. They've always been great people. Their kids, my kids went to school together, and I hate being on the opposite side of the fence. But I got to protect what I believe we have in Hubert. We have a good rural southern community. Now you notice from my accent, I was not born here, but I stayed here because I fell in love with the people here and the lifestyle here. There are plenty of places to put small businesses over Onslow County where you're not interfering with any other motif. I would ask you to consider the options that the Rawls family and the New family have, and I know they have considered it, and they have every right in the world to do what they want to do with their property. But I would ask them, and I would ask all of you to consider all of us who live there quietly and peacefully, and we, we can continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. The new, next speaker is John Kenneth New.
Good evening. I'm John Kenneth New. I live at 122 Barber Road in Hubert. We moved there in 1981, but I have lived within a two-mile radius all my life. The corner we're talking about, my grandfather or grandparents bought it in 1945. It was about a 10-acre tract and known as 108 Sandridge Road. My grandfather was a general contractor who built houses throughout the community, also had a workshop behind his house building cabinets and other wood projects for, you know, for job. So he actually run his business out of the house. In the late 50s to early 60s, he built my childhood home at 136 Sandridge Road, which is right down the street. He had a 10-acre lot, and we were on the southern end. Then he built a brick house, which is 122 Sandridge Road, later on selling it. You know, he built it as a rental project, and then he ended up selling it. That separated the property. By 1992, both grandparents had passed away. The will was simple. Sell all property and divide money equally with four children. One of the children, one of the heirs wanted to sell, which was my father. One of them did not want to sell, which was the executor. And then I had two heirs that remained neutral, because they didn't want to cause conflict in the family. So that's 30 years ago. It's about time we do something with it. We finally got the piece, you know, listed last year, the four-acre piece. We got it sold. One of the neighbors on 172 was interested in it, because he didn't want it developed. One of my cousins, his family that he was married into lived across the street. So they went in together and bought the four-acre piece. My father passed away in 2003. My father passed away in 2003, leaving his 25% of interest, you know, with the 108 Sandridge Road. My mother, she passed away three years ago, leaving her 25% to five of us kids. I was the executor of her estate. Honoring her wishes, we have sold her house and divided the money equally. The 25% that, you know, she was going to receive from my grandfather's will is still unresolved until we sell this other corner. I've got 14 heirs involved in that now, so I've got to deal with them as far as all of them have different opinions what to do with the property. Some of them feel like it's worth more than it is, you know, so that's what kind of stuff I'm dealing with. I've got the power of attorney for those 14 heirs. I've met with the realtor and honoring wishes of my grandfather and my parents, I'm trying to get this property sold. I believe that a community business is more beneficial at this intersection. For example, on the intersection of Hubert Boulevard and Riggs Road, a family opened up a business there. We had a convenience store, a gas station. His brother built a garage to the side of it. Their wife, one of the wives, built a flower shop. That served, you know, that corner as far as, you know, community business. These benefits, these businesses benefited us more than the 45 houses that have been built within 1,000 feet around my current home in the past 10 or 15 years. In other words, we get more benefit out of those stores at that corner in that intersection than we do those 45 houses that have surrounded us. I also had a brick house across from the store. We had it for about eight years. We remodeled it. We rented it out. That there's a good example of having a residence at a busy section.
Thank you, Mr. New. We appreciate it. Time is up. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry. Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Brenda New.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Hatzel-New, and I reside at 122 Barber Road, and I would like to discuss the intersection of Starling Road and Sandridge Road. My husband grew up on Sandridge Road when it was unpaved. He and I have seen a steady growth of traffic in this area. Growth will continue at this intersection, and traffic will increase every year due to the public's desire to live coastal. The future land use map indicates suburban growth in our area. The traffic on this road is not generated by the properties at or near the intersection, but from every bit of Sandridge. We do have high-density housing already on Sandridge Road. It is the shortest route to Camp Lejeune Gates at Honey Green and Jacksonville since the Triangle Outpost Gate has limited hours and to Swansboro Schools due to heavy traffic on Queens Creek Road. The ingress lane to Sandridge is a bent curve, and I mean bent, not a complete point of stop from 172. Folks rarely slow down to take this curve. My concern in having multiple homes on that corner and a school bus stop at the side, and you've got to take into account, we're talking elementary, middle, and high schools, because the properties right on that corner could result in vehicles plowing into the back of school buses. All roads in the Swansboro Township and all areas of Hubert are heavy with traffic during our hours of commute. In 1891, Sampson Starling opened a general store at the corner of Sandridge Road, and the location is currently 198 Starling Road across from our parcel. The current owner is the petition holder. The general store dealt in just general merchandise, fertilizer, farm supplies, and trading and shipping cotton, and also began dealing in livestock. Even in 1891, people understood that the community business belongs on the corner lot of an intersection. Today's community stores strive to enhance safety and security, installing high-quality security cameras. Often, law enforcement requests access to footage for criminal cases. The mere presence of these establishments can deter criminal activity due to these security systems. Concerning the cemetery, my third great-grandfather was a founding member of Queens Creek Church. My ancestors and my husband John's ancestor are all buried in the cemetery. The cemetery is already protected by the North Carolina Cemetery Protection Act in Chapter 65 of the general statutes. Placing a community business on the opposite corner will have no effect on the cemetery. I have great respect for the cemetery and volunteer to walk every inch and record each and every grade on a chart, known and unknown, because some are unknown, the markers are gone, for Queens Creek Church. The petitioner has made several scathing remarks in the discussion area of the petition about our property, which I believe is an attempt to garnish more signatures. We have chosen to ignore these. However, it would be nice to understand why she fabricated the statement of condos in 2024 when we filed for petition, application, and again, on this one, she states there's 34 townhomes. It's clear that no such construction can take place as both situations require access to public sewer, which does not exist on Sandridge Road. No offers have been made from anyone for this type of development. Again, I can only believe that it's just an attempt to garnish more signatures. This is not a get-rich scheme. There are currently 14 heirs involved. This property has been and continues to cause our family a lot of stress and a lot of family conflict, and as the previous executor refused to execute his assigned duties. My husband, John, is making every effort to resolve the situation to the satisfaction of the heirs and respectfully complete his grandfather's stated declaration in his will. He was given power of attorney for the property by the remaining heirs, and I would like to thank the members of this commission for giving us this opportunity to speak and hope this clears up any confusion concerning our intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. New. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Debbie Mallett.
I'm Debbie Mallett. I live at 198 Starling Road in Hubert. I thank you, Brenda, for letting us know. I love history. That we had the general store where we are now, and I think that's a great history. We love the news. We visited with them. He gave us honey. Folks, they were fine, and we love y'all, too. It is tough, like Mike said, meeting our neighbors and having them think ill of us because we don't want to think ill of y'all. We understand. We've heard a lot of the history and so forth. I love history, as I said, but we're living history. We are people that live there now and have, some of us, for over 40 years. We've made history. We've raised our families there. We've reached out to communities. Our red barn on the corner is a landmark for people and children and people who want to have their engagement pictures or Marine Corps ball pictures taken there. There are lights on the fence every year, lasts a little bit longer than December, January. February, they might be on because we love cheering up our neighbors who drive by, and it means something. Now, it seems like I saw you folks last year. Hmm, let's see. It was last year, we voted. You voted on this. We came, we talked, you listened, and you voted. Now, here we are again tonight. It was the very same thing. We are the faces of the people that live there, the people you've heard and so forth. We live right in that corner. Some of us live a little bit down Sandridge. All of us go that traffic. While the folks lived there in the past, they don't live there now. We live there now and have for a while. We have seen the traffic increase. Some things that are the same, the planning board, same three and a half acres, same planning board decision to bring it to y'all. What I heard last year was, as the people who were here, the people who saw the YouTube minutes of the meeting and so forth, the video, saw and heard one of you commissioners say, "We don't even know why the planning board gave us this," but yet they voted unanimously once again to give it to you the next year. We kind of feel, as some have mentioned, about all the projects going on in our Hubert area, community, Onslow County, and so forth, it almost feels like whack-a-mole. We can't keep up. We are there to live, raise our families, connect with our neighbors. One of our neighbors passed away last year. He signed it last year before he died three months later. He's no longer with us. That's something that's different. But we're here to represent his family, who are still grieving. But there's so much to keep up with, and if we're doing this, and I know this is your extra job and so forth, too, we know that you must be overwhelmed by all the rezoning requests and so forth, but we ask you to look and listen. We are the faces of the people. We don't want to look out and hear this. As has mentioned before, you may have cameras to show when people steal and the crime and whatever's involved. We're the people right across that two-lane road that have to face those people who might want to see interest in our homes and so forth. We're the people who get up every morning to the sound of thousands of cars of traffic. We're the ones who, I talked to the volunteer fire department last week, and they said it is kind of interesting to try and go to and to get to the volunteer fire department, go back and put out some of the fires and so forth that we need to. We can't even have people pull over because there's no shoulders. They're right about school buses. I understand that. I don't know what the answer is going to be, but I can tell you, the answer should not be commercial business. Last year, we came with petition of over 400 people. We have almost 500 people, and it was not my intent at all to throw shade. It's just what I look at. That property has not been maintained this year. You can't even see the fire hydrant. The volunteer fire department said when they get there, they will come and make a special effort to clear that up because that's not, neighbors don't do that to neighbors. You make sure the property's safe. Who knows what's growing there? Who knows where people can hide? Whatever else is going on. Neighbors don't do that to neighbors. We know there's two new commissioners. Welcome. That was something that was different. We still have a lot of traffic. We know the property was listed on Zillow and updated in October, and even back in October, it showed that this property was going to be asked to be rezoned for commercial and community marketplace. Well, those of us who live there found about it in May when we got the required letter coming to us. So for months, it was advertised they were going to go for community marketplace. Us neighbors did not know that at all. Our big question for you tonight is, when will this stop? When will we have to keep coming back to you each time and saying, please? Let's, as someone, Daniel, mentioned, this needs to stop, needs to look at whatever you know best and how to do and how to handle with the community input and with other planning board and so forth. Please quit putting these up for us and letting them pass. When is this going to stop? So we came tonight, we spoke, we know that you've listened, we know you're going to vote, but there are people that are going to be looking and going to be listening and want to know a report of how you voted tonight. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Jerry Hillard. And Mr. Hillard, if you could state your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Hillard. I live at 174 Starling Road, Hubert. Last time I was here, we talked about, or I talked about me, my property, and how I put my heart and soul in it. This time, I'm here to tell you facts. We're going to give you facts about what I have found out and what I live. Going to tell you a little story. I moved in there in 2019. The first year, from February to February, I had on my phone 42 accidents, right there in front of my house at 172 and Starling. 42 accidents that I have pictures of, not counting the ones that happened while I was at Lowe's. Okay? So I went to Hans Miller, told him about it. The response I got was, "That's state property," or he called state. Okay? Well, about three years later, our new sheriff, four months before he was sheriff, stopped by my house to tell me, "Thank you for the flags and memorial I have out front." I don't, I didn't know this guy. And he stopped by to tell me thanks. And I said, "Oh, that's cool. I'm sure you'll do well as sheriff." And he said, "Is there anything I can do for you?" Well, sometimes you don't want to ask that. I told him about the 42 accidents. You know what? Before, four months before he was sheriff, the state was out there painting center lines, lines all over the place. He had them out there in seven to 10 days. Okay? So we got all that straightened out. Now, since then, in three years, I've seen two accidents. Okay? Now, you ask me, "Well, why can't we do that down there at Sandridge and Starling?" They don't have a center lane. When that center lane, turning lane, got put in, painted, that changed the whole book. And thanks to our new sheriff, he saved a lot of money, a lot of injuries, before he was even sheriff. Now, I'm going to tell you why I told you that story. Okay? The fact is, I live there. If you come to my house, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to tell you. Look, when you come to my house, make sure that you enter my driveway on the Starling roadside. Now, make sure as soon as you turn off 172, you've got to hit your right turn signal real quick because they're going to ram into you trying to take off down there. So when they come in, you got to do all that, which is a lot safer than trying to go out that way and leave. Come in, turn in. Now, my other end of my driveway goes down to 172. A lot easier to get out than that, and right there at Starling. So I have to tell people that for safety. Now, you ask, here's the thing. When they come around that corner, I've even done it. I'm at my driveway, I'm trying to leave, they're coming around, you look here, nothing. You look here, nothing. You go out, they're all the way around the corner. You move this down there at that corner, you got the same thing. They're going to come around on Sandridge, just like they're coming off of there, and they're going to come out, these new businesses, whatever they got, and they're going to sit there, they're going to look to the left, they're going to look to the right, they're going to go right around that corner, and here we got the same problem down there they got in my house. Now, are they going to tell everybody that they don't have a back way in and out? They got one way on Sandridge. I'm lucky I got a way out. So the only thing I'm trying to tell you is, the facts are that we have a problem there. Everybody knows we have a problem with traffic, rush hours, but they learn to live with it. They're doing fine. They're doing great. Why are we going to add to it? It's already a problem they're learning to deal with, and they're dealing with it great. Why are you going to add to this problem? I'm going to end it with this. We've always been there for you when you needed us. Now, I'm asking you to please be there when we need you. That's the facts.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Our next speaker is CJ Lindsay.
Good evening, Commissioners. CJ Lindsay, 225 Woodcrest Court, Rain Tree subdivision in the Half Moon community, far removed from over there on Starling Road, but I thought I might be able to say something that may shed some light on this thing. It seems that the argument might be, or the disagreement is, that it's being rezoned from RA to something else. Maybe if it were left as RA, it might sell, the property might sell, and there might be less opposition to the proposal. But anyway, my family and I moved to Jacksonville in 1987. We bought a home in the Rain Tree community, which was considered at that time out in the country, way out there, and we did so because we didn't want to live within the city limits of Jacksonville, and it was much quieter, et cetera. As time went on, Jacksonville began to flex its muscle and then came up with something called the ETJ, and slowly it crept out our way. Enough residents from Rain Tree spoke so that we were not included in the ETJ. However, what they did keep in the ETJ was that portion of the property that Omni Homes had left undeveloped, that was one day supposed to be parks and swing sets for the residents of Rain Tree. From Gum Branch Road coming down Rain Tree Road to the first properties on the left and the right, that somehow ends up miraculously in the ETJ of Jacksonville. Now, that was unbeknownst to me for several years. Now, that was unbeknownst to me for several years and several of the residents in our subdivision. About three months ago, the Jacksonville City Council held a meeting because they wanted, someone had petitioned the government to put in a storage unit in the vacant field there at the front of our subdivision. The only reason we found out about it is because there was a little sign posted on Gum Branch Road, about covered in grass, but it prompted my attention to pull over and take a look at it. And it said something about a city council meeting to consider the rezoning of the property. Well, as it turns out, a storage company wants to put their storage units there in the front of our subdivision. That is when I discovered that that property is not county property, but falls under the jurisdiction of Jacksonville. And I suppose the point of this is that we ended up with a Dollar General at the front of our subdivision with a little pond back there to collect runoff water. And now we're going to have storage units put in front of our subdivision. And the, the entire thing butts right up against our, the first homes of that subdivision. But we went to the city council meeting. For those who were aware and could actually make it, I believe there were seven of us who spoke, but to no avail. Two of the seven members were sympathetic to our plight. One, we didn't know it was coming. Two, they looked at the situation and saw how the city was going to impact the county. And coming to some of these meetings, it's like sitting in a poker game because you're trying to read the room. It was evident that evening that for most of the members in that council, it was already a done deal, and we were simply going through the formality of having our say, even though we were not represented by the Jacksonville City Council because of an imaginary property line that separates what they wanted to do from our property. And I suppose what I'm getting at here is I'm hoping that with, I know the Rawls family is wanting to sell their property. I get that. And you're in a difficult position. But you have at least 460 people who have signed a petition, and you have those who have spoken against this. And I hope that it's not a matter that you'll go into lightly, but you'll really consider what the people are saying. So I guess with that being said, I'll end it there. Just weigh it carefully before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Clayton New. Is that correct? Clayton?
Clayton New, Leaven Creek Side Woods Court, Swansboro, great grandson of Subject Parcel. I have to put you all on the spot. I sent a very, kind of an extensive attachment to everybody's email. Did everybody get a chance to read it? All right, then I'll try to be as brief as possible. Let's talk about the current state of the property. Yes, it's wooded there. Mr. Metcalf mentioned one structure. There's actually a duplex on there. So there's two structures, two septic tanks, two water lines. It is wooded. You know, and, and there's the access to the fire department. So when people say there is a strain on infrastructure, we've got two different water lines we can tap. There's, their infrastructure is there. The services are there. The place was already developed. It was one of the first developments along the corridor. That's why the eight-inch water line went down Sand Ridge Road. The property is sandy, so we don't have a stormwater problem. The community business doesn't allow retail over 10,000 square feet. So how much impervious could be built there? Not that much. It's not a big box store. We are looking for service-based industry. I'm a professional engineer. I work for the Department of Navy, and I watch construction job sites suffer every day. Navy captains asking why projects are not finishing, and we don't have tradesmen. We don't have qualified workers. If I wanted my grass mowed, I could get 48 comments on Facebook, but I can't find a good plumber. We need to change our strategic and economic development plan to bring trades. So I know we have people here in education. We've got people up here on public safety. So yes, we as a family did not want to clear the land because I may have cleared away the vegetative buffer that Mr. Hillard enjoys while not looking at the property. I can keep the Williams family from looking at the property. I don't know what the community business owner that we are pursuing wants to do with the property. He might want to keep the vegetative buffer. You know, not everybody wants them to see their back of house. So that is why our family has not progressed and spent a lot of money to clear the lot. Okay? We were leaving it to the next purchaser to decide what they would like to do. However, we are trying to constrain this to a community business. Mathematically, being in the building industry, I don't see a home builder tackling this property and, and being profitable. I just don't see it. So I've made a bunch of notes. You know, we are pursuing tradesmen. The property, and you could hear about the traffic count, you know, it's still within the, the design load. A community business is not trying to draw traffic. I'll never forget it. Walmart told Swansboro, "We don't build buildings for people to come here. They're already here." Our business, which is not a big box store that we are pursuing, the people are already there. We're not trying to draw traffic off of the highway business corridor. We are trying to reduce commuting. We want people to have jobs locally. Service-based jobs at a convenience store, which I think would require a special use permit or a tobacco shop. We don't want that. That is the light pollution that the petition was argumentative against. We're not looking for that. We're looking for a small business to grow and service the community, hire three or four people, you know, not draw traffic. The Dollar General on Hubert and the two Dollar Generals in the Hubert area far exceed from a traffic volume to Swansboro Dollar General because there's competition. You know, just from a, a family standpoint, this has been a 30-year uphill challenge to get the property, property listed for my father. And now we have like an additional two-year process here as I'm speaking. My father lives closer than any other heirs to the property and shouldered all this effort for the family for 5%. So he's carrying 100% of the burden for 5% of the estate. So it is not a money thing. It's a fulfillment of what the family has asked us to do. So yes, if it gets cleared, if it gets rezoned, somebody's going to buy it. They're going to put in a better resilient building, a building that's going to have a better tax value than the one that it currently is on it. And it's going to be a little prettier because everybody finds that wooded corner and they throw their trash in that yard on our property. They don't throw it in Miss Mallett's property, and I don't want her to throw it in any property. But, so from a safety perspective, some of that vegetation will be cleared back. People making the left turn will improve. And it's going to be more sightly for all the community, and it'll provide jobs for their children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smithman?
The next speaker is Charles Rawls.
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Rawls. I reside at 22 Creek Side Woods in Swansboro. My wife, Mary Rawls, has her own real estate company, and that's where I'm employed. Well, that's where I hang out. To set one thing straight on the record, my wife and I have no ownership interest in this property. I'm here solely to represent the news as a client. I have been trying to sell this piece of property for them for about two years, and we've come across some stumbling blocks. And we've tried to, to handle them as we go along. This property, though, to me, is not a residential tract per se. This property is on the corner, but this is, this is a busy corner. So we feel like there should be a minimized amount of traffic exposure to a residential use. For that reason, and for the reason spoken by Clayton, that there's a need for, for, for jobs. There's a need for well-paying jobs. I've been very active in an effort in Swansboro to get real paying jobs. John's very familiar with that. It was an industrial park that we're trying to put right there in Swansboro to get good paying jobs, and we're still pursuing that avenue. But for this piece, it's a rural area. It's a rural area that needs to try to keep the, the people in the area paid a reasonable salary. So we, we have addressed the trades use of it. We don't intend, there's never been any spoken intent to put high-rise condominiums or duplex, 34 duplexes. I don't know where those ideas came, but they showed up in a, in the petition that was, I, I was handed a part of it. But in this case, we're just looking for, for a business to put on that property. Maybe the individual would actually live on the property. We've actually, we've actually got an interested party who, who would like to put a business on the property and live on the property. We discussed that with the planning department, and we can do the business, but we'd have to make some arrangements for the residents. But that shouldn't be a problem. Access. The one thing that I am trying to do is to move the access to this piece of property as far away from the intersection of Starling Road and Sand Ridge Road as I can. I'm able to get it about 500 feet from that intersection, which is a good separation, which is a good access point. So there's been a lot of consideration put in safety. There's a lot of, a lot of consideration put in, in, in trades. There's a lot of consideration put in community service business. So I, I ask you to please consider our actual use and what, and not what has been thrown at you in these petitions that's got 400 and some signatures. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Smithman?
Mr. Chairman, that is the last speaker for this public hearing.
Okay, so this time, we will close the public hearing and bring the issue to the commissioners.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the, uh, second, anyone? Second to the motion. Hearing no second, the motion dies. So now we'll be looking for a-
Make a motion to disapprove the rezoning issue?
May a motion to deny the rezoning. We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I, I appreciate everybody that, that is concerned about this. I think they're, they're totally misguided. It already looks, already looks bad out there, and I, I know what you mean. It looks bad. A, a nice little community business out there wouldn't, wouldn't generate that much traffic. It would clean up the corner. It would look a whole lot better. And these people have a right to do what they want to with their property that they've been trying to do for years. They've come back to us this year with a, in a community business request. Community business is a very restrictive zone. I don't even like it because it doesn't allow a lot of uses. But it's a pretty reasonable request, and I hate to see us turn it down.
I just, I just want to say something. You know, I heard a couple of things in here. They kind of, kind of rubbed me the wrong- Hey, can you hear me now? Sorry. This issue's come up before, and I voted against it the first time. And I'm not going to change my mind. I'll be honest, my mind was already made up before it was even presented, to be honest with you. If you want me to be straightforward with you. Look, there was a couple of things that I heard that, you know, one of the things I heard, the accidents fall within the, the accepted, what is accepted? One, two, 25, 65 accidents? So you're basically putting, you're putting it in a box. It's the old phrase, when you talk about God, you don't put God in a box. God is beyond the box. So why would you put accident statistics in a box? It falls within the norm. That kind of leads me to believe that, so that falls in an acceptable loss. And that's not how I think. I've been on that corner many times. I've been down that road many times. I've been here since 1990. I've traveled down that road. I've traveled down 172. 172 is a scary road like Gum Branch. I hate traveling, especially at night. I hate it. Because you don't know if you're going to hit a deer, or you're going to hit somebody stepping out. I have a friend of mine that lives right on 172, and I had to take a car to him, and I couldn't believe he was right on the road. His driveway goes right on the road, a frequently traveled road. And I've been there at the convenience store. I've seen people come around Sand Ridge Corner really fast. So, you know, I, when we talk about businesses too, we talk about, well, community business is restrictive. First of all, let me say, I'm for progressive growth, but I'm for progressive conservative growth. And I agree with the, I don't know who it was out there talking about the E.T.J. keeps creeping out there. It's like the people in Rock Creek. They moved to Rock Creek to get away from the city, but now the city has somehow found a way to reach out to them. Now, my, my problem is I, I live in the city. That's my choice. If somebody decides to live in Rock Creek or to go to Hubert, which is a nice area, let them enjoy that peace. That's why they bought that property. And that is a dangerous intersection. I, I can tell you that right now. Even when I was a cop, it was dangerous. And so when you see stuff like this, and when I hear 400 and something people or 500, and I've talked to several of these individuals, okay? I'm a commissioner. I represent the people. Some decisions I make are going to be good, some are going to be bad. You're going to agree with me or disagree with me. But I'm not going to go against 500 citizens that have, in my opinion, a sincere and genuine concern. I agree. You know, you say you can put a community business, you can put whatever you want on there, you know? You don't intend to do this, you don't intend to do that. But I don't know that. We don't know what the future holds. What if all of a sudden you decide to put an apartment complex up there or something else? Or you attract the wrong store or community business, people stop going around the corner? I'm saying a lot because I'm pretty adamant about it, and that's why I made the motion to disapprove this motion. Let Hubert be Hubert. And we've got DOT issues out there as well that we, as commissioners, have no control over. That's what's frustrating in this job. We have no control over the roads or stop signs or anything like that. That has to come from the DOT. And don't even get me started on DOT and how they operate. Okay? I, really. I mean, I'll be the first one to tell you that it's just a money-sitching organization. And, and I don't like them because they dragged their feet on too many projects in this county and other counties across North Carolina. And North Carolina has more roads in miles than any other state, from what I believe, or at least they're in the top two in the whole United States. So that is the reason why I'm letting you know how I feel about it. Again, I voted no against, against it the first time, and I'm going to continue to vote no. I don't know why the planning board unanimously approved this, but that's their decision. But I am against what they approved and totally against this rezoning. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, please. Commissioner, Chairman, thank you. The, I'd like to bring this up to a higher level and to the news and to the Rawls, pillars of the community. Absolute respect for you guys. Always appreciate working with the new family and with the Rawls. But in this situation, I think we have a larger problem. I think the folks who were opposing this particular element, what they're really saying, and y'all, if I'm speaking out of turn, y'all tell me, but I think what y'all are really saying is we have a growth problem. And we need a growth management plan. We need to work with the major stakeholders. We need to work with the school systems, with DOT, with our volunteer fire departments on WASSO. And I know we have folks that sit on boards, and we go to meetings as members of these boards, but we are not coming together as a county and putting together a connective growth plan that projects what Onslow County will look like in Hubert, in Rock Creek, in Surf City, in Holly Ridge. What will we look like as a county 10, 20, 30, 40, 100 years from now when we're gone? What is that picture? I, I feel like the board and maybe we've been chasing a lot of things over the last six months, and I just wonder if we've been misguided in what we've been chasing, what's been put before us to chase. I think the public has consistently come to us in the last six months and said, "We have a growth management problem." And I haven't said in one workshop, I haven't said in one meeting where we actually said, "Hey, how can we start talking about how we can tackle growth in Onslow County?" hey, how can we start talking about how we can tackle growth in Onslow County? And I think, yes. Does DOT have to do what we say? They absolutely don't. But can we ask them to come to the table and start working with them? Can we ask Onwassup to come to the same table and start working with them? Can we ask Onslow County Schools, who's represented, to come to the table and start working with them? And have these long-term, hard discussions and dialogue. This will not be easy if the board would choose to do this. It will not be easy. It will take hours. The board will have to work. What a concept. So, and I wanted to say that now because at the end of the meeting, a lot of y'all will be gone, and I totally understand that. We, you know, we need a storm water plan. Yes, in your situation at the news, it's sand and the water just disappears unless it's Hurricane Florence, absolutely. But there's other neighborhoods being built, and the water, what does water do? It runs downhill. And if you don't provide ways to slow the water down, to capture it temporarily, to guide the water, what does it do? It goes downhill, and then you find it on your neighbor's property downhill from you. Yeah, water doesn't care who you are. It's not a respecter of persons. It's going where it wants to go unless you do the planning in advance to control it. So I'm gonna summarize that to say that we need a connected management growth plan that involves our stakeholders in Onslow County from the state level to the grassroots people. We need a storm water plan that also supports these things. So when families come to us and have these issues that they need resolved, we have a plan that helps them be successful, and it also helps their neighbors be successful. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right. Sounds like we've had plenty of discussion and references to growth and everything else. I think everybody in the room, I'll just reiterate. Tony Paget, twenty-plus years ago on this board, we had about a hundred and ten, fifteen thousand people on a budget of $150 million. Now we have a population of 215,000 and a budget of over $3 million. And Marine Corps Special Operations has moved into the area, and the growth. Is the growth an issue? It is. It's gonna continue to be an issue. That's hence the reason for the Horizon zoning plan that we have. And Carter Metcalf does a great job of putting all this together and presenting it to us, from storm water management to, which actually goes to the developers, that comes from the state. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that the state would like, a lot of things the state wants to do, but they won't do it. They push it to us to do it with their mandates. So we have to follow what their issues are or what they want us to do. But I think the Onslow County Planning and Development Department does a good job of coming in here, sharing both sides of the issue with what's required. Lots of decisions have been made. Lots of decisions have been made in Hubert. Lots of decisions have been made on Gum Branch. Lots of decisions have been made in Stump Sound, which is the largest growing area in Onslow County. And it's never an easy job because you have one side that wants it this way, you have another side that wants it this way. And it's your property. Why can't I do it the way I want to do it? And everybody's got to remember one thing. Everybody's got to remember this one thing. Twenty years ago, thirty years ago, when some were moving into Onslow County and developing property and building homes and purchasing property, those same arguments were being made about, I moved here for this. So that's always gonna be a continuous thing because it's always somebody's wanting to come in and move in and so forth and so on. So we have to attack each one of these things as they come to us. So we've got a motion to deny on the board, a second. We've had discussion. At this point, all in favor of the motion to deny signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So the motion to deny carries. I get my math right, this should be five to one. So we thank you, everybody, for your courtesy to each other and doing what is expected when it comes to making these decisions in this manner. So we'll now move on to the next public hearing and rezoning, and we'll bring Mr. Metcalf back up. And I believe we are moving to the hearing on the Foy rezoning. Mr. Metcalf?
Yes, sir. The Foy rezoning, or P.R.E.Z.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Metcalf, my apologies. I've just had a request for a five-minute break.
Absolutely.
So we'll let you hold that wonderful presentation you're about to give us, and we'll stay on pins and needles waiting to hear it. So we're in recess for- To the podium for the hearing on the Foy rezoning and the staff presentation. Mr. Metcalf?
Thank you, sir. So we have the Foy rezoning, P.R.E.Z., 2025, number nine. The applicant is Mr. Jonathan Foy, and the owners of the property are Jonathan and Yvonne Foy. As we take an overview of the request, it is from residential eight manufactured to rural agriculture. There are several tax map properties, which are there listed on your screen. Central address is 152 Bachelor Road and is located in the Richlands Township. The total rezoning acre across all of the parcels is 11.39 acres. There's different uses depending on which tax parcel you look at. There is a residential structure there on the property, and some are vacant. So we take an overview of the services. There's a six-inch Onwassup water main along Bachelor Road, and nearby properties are often served by individual septic systems. The fire service for the area is nine mile with an ISO rating of six. And in 2023, we have a trip count of 350, is what the screen says. But we have a capacity at 14,800, and a correction for that, no, it is 350 for some reason. We can certainly look into the traffic count, and my apologies about that. Meadowview is the elementary school, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. All schools have capacity in that area. As we look at the zoning for the property, it's residential eight manufactured. Nearby is rural agriculture. Let's take a look at the district comparison. It's residential eight manufactured, is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential development, as well as manufactured housing. And again, this is typically supposed to be in our urbanizing areas of the county and allows for multifamily up to 10 units per acre but by special use permit. When we look at our rural agriculture zoning, it's to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density single-family development. Multifamily is not allowed, and a minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. When we take a look at the comprehensive plan, it is designated the area for agriculture forestry, and its intent is to preserve and protect rural character and working lands, and again, providing for limited low-density residential development and non-residential uses that would support those rural residents. Rural agriculture at times is a residential district and at times a non-residential district, depending on the proposed use of the property. But there on your screen is the land use and development summary. Rural agriculture is a corresponding zoning district to agriculture forestry category, both in residential and non-residential. Here you can see that nearby area is agriculture forestry with a little bit of our airport compatibility area there to the northwest. Here you can see our environmental conditions for the property. There are two aspects there of the two log branch stream. There are no detailed wetlands on the property this time, but that would be submitted to staff during any sort of site plan review. The current FEMA maps have it stopping there, just on the opposite side of Bachelor Road. And according to, again, our FEMA flood maps, there is no regulated flood zone on the property. If we look at reasonableness in the public interest, it's supported by our future land use map, agriculture forestry. Its direct corresponding zoning district is rural agriculture. Objective 1.1 has us utilizing our future land use map. Objective 1.3, we're to preserve the rural landscape. This is often done by having lower-density zoning. And objective 2.1, we're coordinating with Onslow County Schools, and our schools here have capacity. And by downzoning, would reduce any sort of potential impact by having the lesser likelihood of more students. Objective 6.1 would be non-supporting because while currently multifamily would be permitted by special use permit, it would not be in rural agriculture. Planning Board met on June 5th and unanimously recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting, and no citizens spoke against the request. No military impacts were presented either during the planning board meeting. The chairman of the planning board's remarks are stated. Total of 11.39 acres on Bachelor Road, zoned R-8M to be rezoned RA. Family-owned land in a rural area. No public comment, and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Here you can see an overview of the area and the nearby farms and other residential uses. And you can see also the properties do, again, have that residential structure, but also are partially forested or completely forested. Here you see where we noticed for the property in front of the residential dwelling. And it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P.R.E.Z. 2025, number nine. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. The applicant is here, Chairman, if you desire to speak with him.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. So we will now open the public hearing. Mr. Smithman, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do not have any speakers for this public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we just take a minute. I don't know if Mr. Foy would like to speak or not. We will give him that opportunity at this time.
Hello, thank you for this time. This was all my mom and daddy's property. I've been there for 64 years. After they died, what, daddy died in 98, mom in 2020. Well, we separated the land, me and my two brothers, in 2004. But we had no idea when we separated that land, what was always rural turned into residential. And I didn't find that out until my son went to, at a shop where he's on my piece of property, and they said, no, it's residential. You're gonna build as big as your house is. But until that, it was always been, you know, agricultural. That's all that's around me. So I'm just trying to get it put back together like it was and get it back like it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foy. Appreciate it. We have no further speakers, so we'll close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Foy. Mr. Metcalf, I think this is your last appearance for this evening for the hearing on the Sanderson rezoning.
Yes, sir. P.R.E.Z. 2025, number 10, is on the Sanderson rezoning. It's on behalf of Bobby and Gina Sanderson. Ms. Gina Sanderson has submitted this application for the board. The requested change is from residential 15 to rural agriculture. There's one tax map number in question, 32-46.1. It's located off of Sweetgum Lane and is in the Richlands Township. The rezoning area in total is 16.27 acres, and the property currently does not have any use. For services in the area, there's a six-inch Onwassup water main along Sweetgum Lane. Nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. Fire service is for Back Swamp Fire District with an ISO rating of four. Our traffic count comes from 20- Our traffic count comes from 2023 Luther Banks Road with a trip count of 600. Heritage schools, or excuse me, the schools are Heritage Elementary, Trexler Middle School and Richlands High School. But the elementary and middle school have capacity and the high school is currently over capacity. We take a look at the zoning districts. This property is residential 15 or R15 there in kind of that light pink category. Just to the north, there is a neighborhood zoned residential 20. And the rest of that kind of nearby area though, is zoned rural agriculture. Take a look at the two zoning districts. Residential 15 is to accommodate moderate density, single family residential development in our suburban areas of the county that have access to the necessary infrastructure to support development at that scale. Multifamily is not allowed and the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. So we compare to rural agriculture. Its purpose is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves that agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low density, single family and limited commercial uses. Minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet and it as well does not allow for multifamily. Take a look comprehensive plan. It details the future land use category of agriculture forestry. And it's to preserve and protect that rural character and working lands that provide for limited low density residential development and non-residential uses. Stated in the previous presentation, rural agriculture is a direct corresponding zoning district to the agriculture forestry category. Here you can see the entire area is designated as agriculture forestry. Here you can see the environmental conditions for the property. There are no regulated flood zones or blue line streams on the property. And no wetlands have been submitted to the county at this time, but again, would be covered through any site plan review or subdivision process. So take a look at the reasonableness in the public interest. It could be considered reasonable because it aligns with our future land use map and that supports objective 1.1. Objective 1.3 is it's preserving our rural landscape. And objective 2.4, supporting Onslow County Schools is both two schools in the area have capacity as well as one over capacity and a down zoning would reduce impact on the school system. And objective 6.1 would not be supporting. And again, it's just a variety of different housing types. R15 provides for a more typical type than potentially what you might see in RA. But it's also an objective that could go either side. Take a look at Planning Board met on June 5th and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting and one citizen did speak against the request. Their concerns were on their property values decreasing if this was rezoned to agriculture. And they also had concern about the potential odors from agriculture operations and also the use of tractors on the roadway. The chairman remarks are as follows. Total of 16.27 acres at the end of Sweet Gum Lane in Ashberry Park, zoned R15 to be zoned RA. One citizen spoke with questions regarding future value of homes, farm odors and traffic. The owner spoke about intentions for the property and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Here you can see an overview of the property and again, it there at the end of Ashberry Park subdivision. And you can see there the property is currently vacant and terminus is there at Sweet Gum Lane. We posted the sign for the property there right at the end of Sweet Gum Lane. And it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2025, number 10. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. And Mr. and Mrs. Sanderson are here, chairman, to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
No, sir. We do not have anyone signed up.
So we'll do like we did, Mr. and Mrs. Sanderson. If you, if you'd like to speak, we'll give you opportunity. If not, it's okay. Okay, fantastic. Thank you, sir. So we will close the public hearing and bring you back.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. We appreciate it. And now we'll move to item six, which is appointments. This is for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, NCACC. Each county has one vote at the annual conference business session each year and we need to select a commissioner.
I recommend that Royce Bennett take that position.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to have Royce Bennett to take that voting seat and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Commissioner Bennett will be the voting delegate for the NCACC conference this fall. Now we'll move to item B, which is the amended item for the North Carolina Coastal Counties Fisheries Coalition, which was started here recently, coming out of Dare County. And we needed a representative for that. And the representative we would like to put up with the approval of the board is Tony Paget. So we need a motion.
No motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I think you couldn't find a better person to do it.
Amen.
I mean, Tony's been around the shrimping industry for I don't know how long, Tony, as long as I've known you, I believe.
Yeah, all my life.
So it's been a long time. So I think it'd be a good person to represent this board.
Absolutely. I agree. Anybody else?
I just, I agree with Paul. Excellent choice.
Absolutely. Tony's, Commissioner Paget has deep connections throughout the coastal communities, especially here in Onslow County and Sneets Ferry. And we know what the fishing industry means to Onslow County. And there's been a lot of things going on here recently impacting the shrimping industry, the fishing industry. And we look forward to what this new coalition will be able to do for the coastal counties and the families and businesses that depend upon this industry. And we look forward to, Commissioner Paget, August 5th is your first meeting. So all in favor of the motion to appoint Commissioner Paget signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Commissioner Paget will represent Onslow County Board of Commissioners at the North Carolina Coastal Counties Fisheries Coalition. That brings us to managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real briefly, I want to again emphasize that this is Parks and Recreation Month. I was fortunate enough to spend some time with all of our Parks and Recreation professionals last week, celebrating their service to our citizens. But it also gave me a chance to remind them that, that in some ways, this is the year, year of Parks and Recreation for Onslow County. Among the board's highest priorities are pursuing an indoor recreation facility, doing comprehensive parks improvements throughout the county and to do a complete refresh of our Onslow Heinz Park and Heinz Farm Park. So lots of important Parks and Recreation activities taking place this fiscal year and throughout 2026. We also received proposals that last Friday for the fire service strategic plan slash master plan. And we'll be reviewing those proposals with a group of seven individuals that have been appointed to review and interview consultants and make a recommendation sometime later this summer. And then finally, I want to welcome Gavin Cummings, who is probably back in the control room, one of our summer enrichment students. We started a program this year to expose rising 10th, 11th and 12th graders to local government with the cooperation of the city of Jacksonville. And I got the opportunity to meet with Mr. Cummings today and he is having a great experience this summer, learning about all the ways that our employees positively impact the quality of life for our citizens. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
We could move into Commissioner comments unless we would like to go ahead and go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion to go into closed session, second from Commissioner Knapp. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of going into closed session this time signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are in closed session and we will not be returning to the chambers.